All right, good evening, everybody. This is the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. It is Thursday evening, November 21st, 2024. The time is 7:30. We're here at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. And we will start the meeting by opening the first hearing.
Okay.
There's some business still in the first.
Lobsters, 49 Plum Island Turnpike. The applicants are requesting a special permit. Your one's first, right? Because it's a nothing.
Correct, so I'll take it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, we have an applicant, application on the agenda that shouldn't have been on the agenda because it never officially was submitted because they were asking legal counsel. So, we're just announcing that we have it on the agenda and that we're not gonna, we're just gonna take it off because it wasn't submitted. So, that's just the formality. All right. Number two.
Susan and Thomas Coast again. 337th Street. The applicants are requesting a special permit finding for section 97, 4D, 5C, 01, increase in footprint of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as being required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed project for renovation to the existing dwelling, including decks on the property located at 337th Street, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., 01951, Assessor's Bank, U4, Lot 165. This is a continuation from November 7th, and this will be continued till 12/19.
Yes.
So, we just received a request for a continuation because the merger houses, merger notices weren't properly mailed? And so, with that, is December 19th or Thursday, Monday?
7:30.
Yep, are you guys both, you can make it?
Yep.
You got it, yeah? Okay, so is there a motion to, for continuance to, on the date of place of location?
Make a motion for continuance for December 19th, 7:30 here at Town Hall.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's continue.
Number three. Earl T. Yvonne III, 10th Sixth Street. The applicant is requesting a special permit for relief from section 47, 97, 4D, 5C, 01, increase in square footage, and two upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as being required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed project in order to raise the existing dwelling on the lot on the construction of a new single-family dwelling on the property located at 10th Sixth Street, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., 01951, Assessor's Bank, U2, Lot 222. And this will be a review of a draft decision based on last points we made.
Right, the hearing is closed, so there's no comment. There's just review and discussion on the draft, the draft decision before us. So, everybody has a copy of the draft decision?
Do you have the question on page three of six? Under one E.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only comment I have. I have a comment that I think we can just cut. All right, you know, and you're...
My goodness, before I'm going to one E.
Okay. So, on page three of six, the, at the top, talks about the property consists of one parcel with total area approximately 0.265 acres, 11,500 square feet. And then, at the very end, it says, "Fair Beach Coastal Resources Area and Flood Zone AE13." And the technicality is that the property really has a swath in the middle of it that is in that zone, but the, if I remember right, the north and the south. And so, I think if we say, instead of saying top and bottom, we put north and south, then people know when they look at the land what the orientation is.
Yes, I got it.
So, I would just propose changing top and bottom to north and south.
Okay.
Any comments, Larry?
Me? No.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the decision as drafted with the one edit?
I'll make a motion to accept the decision as drafted with the one edit.
Second that motion?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, passes. I'll make that edit.
I'll leave it in the box.
Yes, you leave it in the box, and then you can, you can sign it.
Awesome.
Number four?
Yep. All right. Gerald Fandetti, 11 and 15 Sunset Drive. The applicant requesting variance/reversal of administrative decision and a special permit finding for relief of Newbury zoning bylaws, section 97, 4D, 2B, and 97-6B regarding allowed use and dimensional requirements in order to correct the lot configurations, allowing for the creation of a legal non-conforming lot to be redeveloped in order to raise the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and for the construction of a new single-family dwelling with garage on the island. Property located on 11 and 15 Sunset Drive, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., 01951, Assessor's Bank, U2, Lot 78 and 8.
All right. Is the applicant here?
Yes, I am here, and we're waiting for Gerald Fandetti and Charlotte. They should be here any minute, they're on their way.
Okay. So, we'll take a breather, and we'll look at what's in front of us.
Sure, and I could try to answer any questions until they're gone.
Just wait.
If it helps, I also have some printed material here.
Oh.
Not every, not everything that you have in the package, but some of it.
Anybody find that one?
Yeah.
I am the architect, by the way. My name is Leah McCadham.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
Does your monitor have a copy of that? They got the plans, but just the grid and standards.
Oh, absolutely.
And maybe something else? Because they've got a lot of confusion.
What do you mean, why? Discussion with the many of others? Something to do with that.
Chrissy?
Are you ready?
Change this to this one. And from here to here, on 77th and 78th. Stop and clear, because it's this. Yeah, go through this one. Well, this is Sunset Boulevard, so it's, it's a boulevard.
Let me know if there are any questions I can, I can try and answer. Jerry can speak to variance issue because he knows the history better than I can.
We're gonna open it, and let the introductions be added.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we're gonna talk about the process here, the board, so what's in front of us. And then, we can decide how to focus what we're, focus on first and second, whether we're sure at all, whether we just focus on that, that would be the opening figure.
Hi, Charlotte. You have the door down there, it's stuck right in the camp. It's got stuck at the door.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I will report that to the building. I apologize. Thank you. Appreciate it, Jerry. I do have a burger on the way, so I'll get it.
Great. So, we're still, we're still waiting, right?
No, here's the guy.
Okay, so, before we get started, I'll, I'm so excited to get the meeting going. I feel a little bit of formality, but it's like to introduce who we all are.
I'm part of trade stuff. Can you push me up closer, I can hear what you're saying?
Yep.
Sure.
I can't hear. Sorry.
What's wrong?
I can't hear what you're saying to me. This should be good enough.
Okay, so, here for the ZBA is Chrissy Hoopri, who's our administrative assistant. My name's Eric Spahn, I am the chair. We have Mario Karavali, who is a member. We have Larry Murphy, who's a member, and we have Jack Kelly, who's a member of the planning board and is the liaison.
Okay.
You got that, you just back. Oh, did I?
Okay.
Sorry about that. It's not my idea. Okay, so, here we go. We read in and, right, you read it?
Yep.
So, we read in and opened the hearing, and so, we'd like to know if the applicant's here to present? And if so, you can come up to the podium, you can come a little closer, fall at your chair, speak loudly so everybody can hear you.
Would you like to introduce?
Yes. Gentlemen.
I'm Charlotte Forsythe. We've been married 55 years, and he has been my last name.
Gerald Fandetti. And we are here to, to ask for two things. One is the variance, and one is the finding for a new property that we're planning on building on, this particular lot. We have been residents...
Could you speak louder, please?
Sure. We have been residents of Plum Island for over 22 years, and we enjoy living on the island. And because of Charlotte's disabilities right now, we've been looking for a property where we could build a one-level house with a garage. And that would fit our needs and hopefully sell a lot of our living problems. So, we found a property at 11 and 15 Sunset Boulevard, Sunset Drive, sorry, that we thought would meet our needs. We consulted with attorneys, and they all said, "Oh, it looks like you could make it work for us." The situation on that particular property is sort of unique, and I think the property has, in that regard, significant hardship in that when the property was first subdivided back in 1923, it consisted of four lots. And somewhere in the 60s and 70s, because of some, of the merger doctrine, two of the lots were merged for 11 Sunset, and two of the lots were merged for 15 Sunset. However, the lot on 15 Sunset, as I understand it, violated state law because it doesn't have access to a street or a viable method of access. And so, for all these years, that property has been sort of unique. It doesn't have access to a street. Currently, the only way to get to the property is to go across property owned by 11 Sunset. In addition, the property has a house on it that was built in the 1890s, and that house is, straddles the property line. So, a portion of the house is on 11 Sunset, and another portion is on 15 Sunset. So, it's, it's got all kinds of title problems. If you look at the house from any, any method that you want, it doesn't seem to be in the right spot. And when they did the subdivision lines, they obviously were in error. And when they merged the properties, the two lots together, that was definitely an error because the lot doesn't have frontage. So, we're here to get a variance requested by the building inspector through town council that this would be the methodology to resolve the issues with that particular lot. And our proposal is to take one lot of the four that exist, one lot from the two lots that make up 11 Sunset, and add it to 15 Sunset. This would solve the problem. It would give access to Sunset from, for 15 Sunset. In addition, the house that's currently on 11 would not violate any of the PIOD dimensional requirements. So, that would be, and we happen to own both properties, so we can manage that situation easily. So, that's, that's what our proposal is, that we take one of the four lots that got assigned to 11 Sunset and add it to the two lots that make up 15 Sunset. And that would add the three lots for 15 Sunset and one lot for 11 Sunset. That's the hardship that we have.
The, so, you brought this up to building inspector. Building inspector sought town council to make sure the understanding of what, what needs to happen. Yes, a pathway that, that town council had outlined in terms of the property was that step one is that you would need a variance.
That's step one, correct.
If a variance was granted, then you could go to the planning board and seek a site plan review for...
ANR, an ANR.
ANR for what you'd like to do. And if the planning board was in agreement, then you could, then at that point, the property lines would be settled, and you would then come back as for, well, more standard applications for just opposed new structure on a lot. Okay. So, four variances that are not governed by our bylaws, chapter 97 of the town, 97 is the zoning bylaws. The state, chapter 40, section 10 governs variances, done so so that everybody across the state is doing the same thing.
Basically, true.
So, with that, in section 10, there are three requirements for, in which to make a case for a variance, and they all deal with the land and the geography.
Exactly.
And being unique. So, have you laid out the course of action? I mean, you can, you say you had a hardship, but I guess I'm looking for the, the understanding of exactly how that hardship plays out to the three, the three elements in section 10, and if I could pull up section 10, if I have a copy. Does anybody need to see, I don't have any questions while we're discussing this. You have a site plan there? We don't have an easel, do we?
That, just that easel.
So, if we could just turn that around, and you could actually put the plan up, or if you wanted to put the plan not here in front of the camera, but so there's a chance for everyone to see what, what's being presented.
This is, are you suggesting we use it as an easel?
I think that's hopefully a user, is that the other camera?
It's a camera.
I mean, it's a camera trap. I mean, how about if I just, I'll just leave it in line here?
Sure. And Larry, is there anything from the planning board's view of what I just, Chris already laid out?
So, what were the three requirements that, or hardship?
Um, so... Section 10 variances, the permit granting authority shall have the power, after a public hearing for which the notices were given by the publication and posting as provided in section 11, and by mailing to all parties in interest to grant upon appeal or upon petition with respect to particular land or structures, a variance from, from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaw where such permit granting authorities specifically finds that owning to circumstances relating to the, and here are the three, relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it was located. So, in overview, they're, they're simply saying that there's something about that particular land of that property which is different and not consistent with the rest of the neighborhood that would cause you to seek a variance to do something different, like cause and effect, right? You had a lot, and it was flat, and all the other lots in the neighborhood were flat, you couldn't get a variance. Okay, so, explain that part. Especially affecting the land or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district by which it was located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant, and that a desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degrading from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw.
Yeah.
Except where local ordinances or bylaws shall explicitly permit variances for use, no variance may be authorized for a use or activity not otherwise permitted in the district. And then, it goes on for a couple more paragraphs, but that's the meat of the section ten.
Yeah, in this case, we have two, well, we got, this violates chapter 48 in regards to the requirement for having frontage on a street, and also, the structure that's currently on the property straddles two properties, and that's another, according to what you read, at least I interpret that to me, there's a hardship there because of existing structure. So, I think we are...
Did you buy the two lots at the same time, or at different times?
Two times, the same time, but they're two different entities.
But you knew that it was a landlocked lot? Landlocked lot?
It was on a common Plum Island.
We knew it was a landlocked lot.
Right, but I think the point, the point that's trying to be made is that if you have a property that's half on your neighbor's property, and you buy that, you're, and you have that lot, it's landlocked, then you're buying a piece of property at that point in time that you can't do anything with. So, until you buy a second piece of property, the chances of doing anything on the first property are, are none.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Which is absolutely there.
You could live in the house, for sure, but you couldn't improve it or, or do something.
Well, if we wanted to sell it.
You couldn't.
Couldn't sell it.
And that's the case of, okay, so you were able to actually buy it at risk, and then buy a second piece of property, and, and that's...
Yeah.
Part of the pathway that's coming here. So, you understand what?
Yeah, completely.
Right.
Would you explain that? Would you explain that to us?
So, the, the property at 15 has a residence on it.
Right.
That residence is a third over on, on the currently property 11's property.
Right.
So...
We happen to know that because it was his sister.
Okay.
Familiar with it.
The town can't come and take away a right that is currently there, but the rights of the property owner to do something would be in conflict because, A, they don't have frontage, two, their house is on somebody else's lot. And so, if you're buying the piece of property, you could live in it, but you couldn't improve it. Right? Every property has certain rights. The PIOD helps to control those for a situation on Plum Island, which for most of the properties, they don't meet the standard zoning anyway. So, we're just trying to get how we get from point A to point B, and the steps and the thought process here, so we understand what's going on. When you own a piece of property, and you have a house on it, and you buy the adjacent piece of property that doesn't have a house on it, it, it's, and Larry jumped in if I'm getting this wrong, but as the merger doctrine says, that if you own two adjoining pieces of property, they are then, under common ownership, they are then considered one lot. So, um, so when the property was first made, first set up, when the property was then sort of re-subdivided, two lots were made into one, two lots were made into one. So, in buying the two lots, the request now is to basically subdivide one of the lots and add it to the other lot. So, take from this lot, give it to this lot. And the argument that's before us is that the lot that's, that's being made smaller will still meet with the existing structure, and I think you're proposing to do something to the deck in order to meet your side.
Yeah, we can use the deck, so it's still compliant, yes.
So, that it would be a... So that it would be compliant under the P I O D. So if it would take its course, and what we typically look at is, we judge what comes before us against what else is in the neighborhood, and the fact that what somebody wants to do is compliant or they're making it that much more compliant makes typical applications favorable. If somebody wants to exacerbate or somebody wants to make a nonconformity, that's a nonstarter. Those applications don't go anywhere. So for whatever, what's going on, if, if one property with some minor revisions to it, to the structure can be made compliant with P I O D, one would think that that property is acceptable. The, and the fact of pulling out section ten here, which is from the state, Massachusetts state law, which governs zoning and part of that sets up the zone, the local zoning board. We have our own zoning bylaws, so variances are not in our bylaws, they're in the state bylaw. And the state controls it by saying, again, that a variance to a specific, and here we're talking about either lack of frontage, total size of lot, or setbacks, that the piece of property is, is different from its adjoining neighbors because of soil conditions of shape, topography, soil conditions, shape and topography. If, if somebody had a piece of property and they wanted to build a house on it, and there was ledge on half the property and they wanted to put the house next to the ledge, but not on top of the ledge, we might consider that the ledge is unique to the neighborhood and therefore conditions, a ledge, a big rock, might be a soil condition that would allow the variance to allow the structure to be placed slightly different from what the zoning requires. So that, that's just an explanation. Okay, so by making the presentation of what's before us, I'm asking, we're asking to understand the argument that's being made so that we understand that it's specifically meeting the intent of the state law. That's where we are. And. So in making some general explanation, I started to explain about one piece of property. And the step here is that although they're, they're seeking two things, is one is they need a variance to rearrange the property. If, if we agree or allow that, then it needs to go to the planning board and run through a planning board review process. If that is successful, then it would come back to us for what would be a more standard application of asking us for a special permit in order to put a new proposed structure, and then they would tell us how it was designed and how it meets all the P I O D regulations. So again, typically, people on Plum Island who follow the P I O D and come before us have a fairly easy time getting their project approved. When we have nuances of first-time issues that come before us, we have a little bit of discussion that's needed and sometimes we need to understand the pathway of what's happening to make sure we're doing things appropriately. Everybody has rights, we're, you know, we're all Newbury residents here. We're, we're trying to do the best thing for everybody, but we have checks and balances and controls that we're trying to meet. So the first step is, is really just understanding the properties and not really talking about what is proposed for the future at the moment, right? One might argue that we should understand what's being proposed as, as it relates, but I think really we're just focused on the variance in the property.
Okay.
Okay. So in the documentation you provided, is there a site plan that shows where the Dartmouth Drive, or this is Dartmouth way here?
Yes.
So that's not. Is that this?
Regist.
Where, where is Dartmouth Drive on?
Okay. Sunset is here.
This is eleven, this is fifteen, that's right.
See right there, close it right, here.
And so your plan, the survey plan for Mr. Chandler, shows the road even though it doesn't exist?
Yes.
Here.
It's owned by the town, yes.
Yes.
So it's a separate parcel.
But there's no, there's no asphalt here.
It's owned, that's what I, there's, there's, yeah.
I didn't realize.
Yeah, there's a telephone, series telephone poles.
Okay.
There's a pole there somewhere. But there's telephone lines, there's electrical lines going through there because it's a right-of-way for utilities, I guess.
Okay, just clarifying what we're, we're looking at. So. I don't know if you'd like to read that for yourself, but we're, we're looking for you that will help from us to try to make the statement that talks about the hardship of whether it's a soil condition, whether it's the shape of the land or whether it's the topography that of such land that causes the issue before us to.
Well, I would say the shape of the land is a significant issue because it doesn't abide a street. If it were a different shape, which could have happened at some point in the past, these three could have then merged together and then you could have had access to Sunset. But they didn't know that for some reason.
The.
It's the, it's the shape of the parcel and the hardship is no access. Chapter forty-eight requires any lot that's subdivided has to have access. They violate, when they did this merger, they violated that very law. And I would say that's, that's a hardship. In addition, American Disabilities Act has to, the board has to take into account the disabilities that we are facing with this development we're planning to do. So we're moving that as consideration also.
Well.
If I haven't got there yet.
If I haven't got there, I could appreciate you saying that, probably, or, you know, or when we get to what is proposed, let's, let's just focus on lots and how we're squabbling. Does everybody understand what's going where?
Yes.
And what's being proposed in terms of the shape?
And it doesn't, there's no harm to any, anybody, because, because it's just one parcel that's being chopped up in a different manner. It just provides access for that different parcel.
Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Murphy has a comment.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, can I, I'm gonna go in a little different direction. I'm confused about the ownership. Who owns eleven, who owns fifteen?
Two different entities, which we are owners of.
Well.
One is.
If you put them in common ownership, wouldn't merger, you know, you've just got one big lot and wouldn't that solve your problem with variance?
With one lot, you can only build one and have one house on it. I mean, the other option is to say, have, create a variance to build two houses on one lot.
Oh, so you want to preserve the house that's already there?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
This lot, this house here.
This lot and this lot are now one lot. This lot and this lot are one lot. They want to take this piece and give it to this one so that these old three lots now become one big lot. This lot in the corner remains the same. They take the deck off and supposedly it meets all the metrics of dimensional requirements of the P I O D. So if, if this is not encumbered or hembered or exacerbates any zoning dimensional requirements and could have been a, you know, a pre-existing nonconforming house that meets the P I O D, then the question for this lot, these two that don't have the frontage because the roadway is actually here.
But he has a driveway here though, right? You have a driveway to get on fifteen?
No.
No?
No, there's a, there's a driveway here.
Well, it cuts across.
So, so do you have an easement?
No, there's no easement.
Because. So, so could one not get an easement and then build on this lot?
An easement to.
This, this property gives an easement to this property to drive across and then, then they could build on this lot. That's one pathway.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, the other thing obviously is if you have three lots and the lots are bigger, then you can sort of your house on.
Although you wouldn't get an A and R with that though if it didn't have the required.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Did you, well, I, I didn't.
It wouldn't be a buildable lot if you tore down that house.
So.
It wouldn't be a buildable lot.
Right, so can you describe an A and R from planning board?
If an A and R, it's, the, the general laws say that anytime you're creating new lots, okay, it comes under the subdivision control law, subject to subdivision control, unless you can demonstrate that you have the required frontage and acreage and everything you need to meet zoning for the lot, then you can come before the planning board for approval, not required, or A and R endorsement of your plan. I hope that was clear enough.
So by doing this and, and setting up and shifting some property from one ownership, technically, from one property to the other, if one person owns everything, but they're actually two separate trusts or entities, and they're shifting property, and then this comes back to the planning board, would the planning board?
If, if, if we have the variance, yes, if they have the variance, because then they would become legal lots and, you know, per the variance.
And the planning board review does, does what? Just passes it, files it?
It's usually very simple, you know, you know, no, no public hearing, nothing. It's very, it's a very quick and pro forma almost.
So you guys do a quick review and it meets, the checks, all the boxes, it is what it is?
You need frontage, you need, you need to meet zoning, which can be done either by literal compliance with the zoning or because you get a variance.
Okay, so in this process, the variance, in terms of, of providing a variance, would say that the proposed re-division of land is acceptable under the variance and we are giving a variance for the noncompliance of the frontage for that, for that property?
Yeah.
Because the planning board would then look at this and say, okay, it's got this, it's got that, check, check, check. It's got a variance for the frontage, which it doesn't comply, but it has a variance checked and it, and it would then become a lot.
Right. And we, I would think, you could almost think of it as special zoning for that lot. And we're just looking to see that it complies with the zoning. And it has adequate access to, is one of the other things we would be looking for.
Is there anything, so and then, so we're not talking about a structure on the lot, we're really just talking about the lot. So the lot, the lot has frontage? The lot has a, an area?
Right, it's not a guarantee that it's buildable. I mean, you, you, you know, in a different situation, for example, you'd still have to meet subject requirements and that type of thing. Of course, that's not an issue on the island, but just by way of example.
Right, so.
But, but we don't get into that.
Yeah, we haven't gone through conservation.
Yeah, yeah, we don't get into that. You, you would go to conservation.
Right, and we don't, we don't get into that either. We might point out that we think you'll have a different, difficult time at conservation or there's something that we'd like conservation to look at, but we're not the body that, that is responsible for reviewing and approving CONCON or are we the planning board for their special jurisdiction of what they have over? So if, yeah, what's the size of the combined three lots? Somewhere in here.
Twenty-three thousand seven hundred and one square feet? That sound right?
That's the new.
That's the new, oh, the existing? Fourteen eighty-seven, okay.
And that's the existing for fifteen?
Existing for fifteen, according to the.
But neither, neither lot, if, if the relief is granted, neither lot is going to comply with zoning.
No, it's forty, it's forty thousand.
So you really need a variance in both lots?
Right, that's why you're here.
Oh. If, if the, the relief that you're requesting is granted, I think you, you're still gonna wind up with two lots, different configurations, but neither one of those lots are going to meet the required zoning, because the underlying zoning is the A G R, which is.
Forty thousand, forty. Hundred twenty.
And you're not gonna.
No.
Meet that. So what I'm saying is you, what you probably need is a variance on both lots.
To make them comply with planning.
Right, because you, you, the one, the one that has the house on it, that will have the house on it, is gonna be a separate lot and it's gonna be nonconforming.
Right.
You're taking two nonconforming lots and changing them into two other nonconforming lots.
Right, and so variances need to be granted in order for them to carry the nonconformity forward?
I wouldn't expect so. I can't speak for the building commissioner, but I would expect so.
So it's nonconforming if you're speaking on the house?
Right, but they're granted.
They're called legally nonconforming.
Yeah, but they're granted.
Yeah, and we, we can't allow an application to come in that wants to propose a new structure that would introduce a new nonconformity.
Right.
So if you were to do this and you're basically introducing new nonconformities to eleven, you would need a variance for eleven. So what's the frontage, Jack, on number fifteen, please?
He has the frontage.
No, the front.
So it's, it's stated as zero. So what is the new frontage? Seventy-seven feet, point oh two. All right, so for lot eleven, what is the area? Existing and then. Existing for eleven?
This is for fifteen, yeah, where's eleven? Eleven's here. So the frontage for fifteen is almost three hundred feet.
Now, existing?
Existing.
And what is it going?
That was eleven, eleven is three hundred feet.
Right.
That's all, it's, it's fronts on two streets.
So what's it going to?
It's going to one eighty on eleven. Eleven goes to one eighty on three hundred.
So it's still compliant, still meets. It still has.
More than a hundred, yes.
What is the area of lot eleven? Is this, is this now?
Existing is seventeen thousand square feet.
And what is the new area?
Eight thousand, five, eight, eight thousand five hundred.
Okay. So lot eleven would require a variance for the, the lot area. It would not require a variance for the frontage because the reduction of frontage still meets the requirement.
But is it nonconforming, it still would be nonconforming to the area?
Yeah.
But, but it'd be a new, would be creating a new nonconforming, it's, it's reached half the size it was.
Right, but we, if, if, if we granted a variance, then it would now be, it would continue to be a new nonconforming.
At the smaller rig, at the smaller.
Right, smaller side. So that would be a pathway for eleven. We would then also look to say that the structure, the side yard setbacks, the F A R.
Comply with P I O D.
The coverage all comply with the P I O D. And then one would say that what is being proposed for that lot is not any more detrimental to the neighborhood because it meets the intent of the law of P I O D and what we are doing is giving a variance for its, its area.
Are we able to ask questions or how's this working?
In a moment. I, I will. For fifteen, which is zero frontage.
Well, here it says for frontage on fifteen, a hundred and twenty feet.
Existing, it does say that, I wondered about that too.
So it's a hundred and twenty feet existing.
Well, the hundred and twenty feet must.
Go over here.
Yeah, sixty and sixty.
So is that considered frontage? No.
No.
Well, that, this is then.
Well.
Well, it is frontage, but it isn't.
So the hardship of the land is that the, the, the supposedly frontage on what is a, is a road that is deeded or documented as a road, but it doesn't exist as a road. So the shape of the land.
The town wants to finish the road?
Do you want to finish the road?
No, I don't want to finish it.
Do you want to fill the road up to here?
No, I don't want to do that.
See, that, that's another path, I think.
That would never happen. Conservation would never, never allow that.
That's kind of defeat the P I O D for reducing and for these materials. So that, that's what's before us. There's, there's two properties here, and the two properties have different conditions which are existing and which will be new. And on eleven, it seems like we would grant a variance for the area of the lot, assuming everything else checks out. And, and on fifteen, we would be granting a variance for the area of the lot, and we would be granting a variance for the frontage.
Exactly. Those were the two conditions that the city inspector put in our denial. Those were the two conditions that we had to.
Does he see what's going on?
Yes. I've, I've, I've worked with him and town council for several months to come up with this procedure.
On August twenty-eighth, Lee Sime wrote a very comprehensive four-page memo outlining the, the steps of the prerequisites to a division in terms of understanding how the, the variance needed to happen before there was any discussion of any proposed house, that we couldn't grant a special permit and do this all at the same time.
Yes.
Because the variance needs planning board approval, it's step two, and assuming it gets planning board approval, then it would be back before us for the proposed structure that's on the ground.
Discover.
Does that make sense? Okay, so I think we have a good understanding. Do you guys have any questions?
No, are we gonna, what are we gonna be asking the applicant to come back with?
We, we are gonna open, we're gonna go through our questions first. We're gonna ask the public here if they have, have comments to make on this. We're gonna keep the comments to the idea of what's proposed for the lots and the idea of, of how and why a variance might or might not be granted. And then we'll see where that takes us to a version or if we have other questions or if we need more information or what.
Right.
That's the problem. All right, so. So with that, I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project. Okay? None at the moment?
I think you all have a little butter, letters in opposition to.
I guess.
It's a second. Thank you.
Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak against the project or, or just has general questions whatsoever? Yes?
Okay, I'm Margaret Thomas, and I'm actually in the butter for two pieces of land in the afternecks deals for one year. I'm gonna butter on fourteen and on thirty-eight Dartmouth, so I'm very interested in the road going into Dartmouth as well.
If you could come up here as well. From here, so I can hear you.
Yep. So my comments had to do with, I own two pieces of property there. I bought the thirty-eight Dartmouth because it was unbuiltable, because there's no road into it, and because I didn't want it built on, and I wanted the, the wildlife to be able to come and go. I know we're not supposed to be talking about the housing. You change the lot size, you're then allowing a larger house, and my concern is the larger house on this land is going to impact the current um wildlife that is there. I mean, I sit down, I watch it all the time. But setting that one aside, number one is the house at eleven, the access to their driveway is not on Sunset, it's on Bryn Mawr. And does that make a difference in terms of frontage? So you're saying it has frontage, but it doesn't go into the road that you're supposed to, so why is that any different from what they're asking for?
The, typically if you have a house and it has, it's on two streets and technically it has two frontages, even though there's a perceived direction to the house, you can claim which, which road you'd like to use as front.
And I understand that. So if you look at the property, the current configuration, they do have access to the house. It may not be the hundred and whatever the requirement is on Sunset, but you add that to what they have, where they, where they come into it. There is more than enough room for them to have, they actually have had a driveway for, you know, fifty years. So we know that there's access there, so if they can have the road on, on eleven go into Bryn Mawr, they could do the same thing on a, on a, on Dartmouth Way, is what I'm asking.
Dartmouth Way doesn't exist.
No, I understand that. But you, your frontage can be included, you know, it doesn't, it's not that it just completely stops, it wraps around. No, no, no. I, I know.
No, it's, it doesn't, the property for eleven, uh fifteen does not touch Sunset at all. Does not.
And so the driveway that's been there for fifty plus years.
That goes through eleven?
Right, and so that could be done as the variance. And the thing is, is that this issue is not a new issue, we all know that. I think every one of us has gone through this exact same issue with our own homes on Columbia Way and Bryn Mawr. You know, in my case, we had to pick up our house and move it. So, you know, it, the, the property lines and the way that you described it, that's the entire island, and it happened everywhere. So that to me is not a particular hardship, everybody had to figure out how to handle it. And I know that you said that we're talking about the variance. My concern is the variance, that makes us a huge lot, a twenty-three thousand square foot lot, which then allows you to put up a thirty-five hundred square foot building, which is huge in comparison to everything that's in the neighborhood already.
That's not true. There are buildings that size.
In that neighborhood.
In that neighborhood, yes.
Other than their home.
Well, not other. There are houses that love that size there. It's not, it's not any different.
As a single-story home spreading across the land, yes.
That's our goal, that we're gonna have a single-story house.
And I understand that, as I say.
Martha.
Margaret.
Margaret, thank you. Let's make your, make your point, and then we can, we, we will note to discuss.
Again, my point is that if you, you provide this variance, you're allowing for this greatly huge house to be built that is really going to impact all of the land that's around it, and that's my biggest concern.
Noted. Is there anybody else that has a question or would like to speak?
I don't know if this is.
Just state your name and your address.
Donna Finnigan, six Bryn Mawr Way. And I just want to attest to the fact that my bird has already said there has been access to that little house for over fifty years, from Sunset, Sunset Drive. Also, just as a matter of fact, of Plum Island, being Plum Island, the previous owner did not change anything from what she had in the beginning, because she just did not intend for it to be two separate lots. She owned it, and that's the way it was. She liked the fact that she owned all of that. It did not matter to her that it be divided into two separate lots.
Understood.
She didn't pursue it, in other words.
If it's sold and there's no.
That's right.
Deed restrictions, then, then, you know, her, her wishes and thoughts are not carried forward unless there's some, something that runs with the deed. But appreciate your, your comments on that. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Do you have any comments?
I'd like to be convinced a little bit more on the hardship. It seems like the hardship we're going with is based on the soil, or, excuse me, the shape, more than the soil and topography and simplify. I think the hardship is caused by wanting to make two lots. If there, if there's one lot, then there's no hardship, we got plenty of frontage. So, so if this was a standard Plum Island situation, where you tear down a small house and build a big house, which we do, or build a more modern house, which we do all the time, there'd be no issue. I'm not opposed to anyone using their land for the highest benefit. I just want to be convinced that there's actual hardship.
I, I don't think if you tore down that little house, you could rebuild, because it wouldn't have frontage.
I, I was just using as an example. I wasn't talking about that specific lot.
Okay.
We, we did have a while back, the end of Pearson Drive, where we had the three properties. They all had a minimal amount of frontage, and the one lot that didn't build at the time of the development lost their rights after eight years for the, for the conditions of the subdivision that were granted in the time. And if the only pathway was get an easement from somebody else or get an, you can't access the property because that physically exists, it, it doesn't comply, so I can't do anything with it.
Right.
So here we have another piece of property that has it exists of a lot, even though it's two older lots, it's still one lot, that has, has a driveway off of Sunset over Dartmouth Way. So a path forward is you, you could build on that lot if you gave yourself an easement from eleven to fifteen. The, the driving over Dartmouth Way wouldn't be a harm or a foul because it's a public way, and as long as you're not parking in the public way, you would have a small easement to drive over what is existing on eleven to get to that piece of property. And I guess that is, that is the crux of the issue of, of granting and increasing the size of the property that allows you to be, build much for your house. And so the question, in terms of the P I O D, which we govern everything by, is, is what is proposed in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood? And it's, it's, it's been our it's been up to us to decide what exactly is the neighborhood, and it's not all of Plum Island. It's not necessarily all of the adjacent houses. It's, it's the setting in which the, the property sits. And typically that deals with people who have non-conformities where the house is much closer to, or there's an existing building line that they're trying to build to. And so we're, we're trying to see is that, is it already existing down the street, then, then your piece of property wouldn't be any different than anybody else's, so we would tend to grant, grant that as a special permit or a funding. So as Loi said, we're talking about the lot. The, the effort to do what you want to do then does grant you the ability to build a certain size house, which is not, would not be allowable for the size of the, the lot that currently exists. So understanding how you're subdividing the, the lots, Larry, there's a question for you. Could, could the lot? So the lot, right, what is being proposed is being based on old lot lines.
Yeah.
Does that have a little bit of a difference of anything, or can they just draw a line down a piece of paper and say, we'd like to do this with this?
Yeah, it would be a lot easier if we had something we could all look at together. But if I understand it, what you're proposing to do is, is you have a point where it says iron pipe found and then ninety foot, seven five foot internal lot line. And maybe you could help us with this. What you, what you want to do is, is basically this is your existing lot, aren't you correct?
Yes.
All right. And what you want to do is you want to move this lot on over here?
Yes.
Okay. And do we know, when you do that, how many square feet is this new lot going to be, assuming, assuming that it's, that the relief was granted?
It's twenty-three, twenty-three thousand.
So it's still not gonna get anywhere close to the forty thousand.
No, clearly.
Okay. So you're reducing the size of this one, increasing the size of this one, but they're both non-conforming?
They both be non-conforming.
It looks like you have your frontage.
It does, this.
You only have seventy-seven.
But it doesn't have frontage, a hundred and twenty-five feet.
It has seventy-seven here. Oh, okay. Yeah, unless, unless you can, unless you can carry the frontage. I'm not sure if you can't carry the frontage on Dartmouth Way.
How it plays and.
No, I, I understand that, because in terms of technical compliance with the.
Oh.
You know, this would be a very logical event question. It really would.
Our case has been bad luck.
Yeah, we're not, we're not loaded that. Well, it, it still comes down to it, I guess. I mean, it's, you know.
And in terms of.
Lot shape, soil condition, or, or, um, topography.
The shape of, now, my feeling is that the shape of the lot, and it doesn't comply with state law requiring a, requiring frontage to have a lot.
Right, it's non-built to a lot.
Yeah. And then if we tore this down, this would be non-conformity.
Yeah.
Maybe I think you're right there.
So we have issues, uh, we have, what do we do? Uh, I mean, plus it's, it's on the, on the property line. So because they made an error, they subdivided this, or they merged the lots. That's my argument.
Well, that, that happened as a matter of law. Nobody said we would merge these lots as a matter of law, because these were common ownership, they merged. Right. The select board didn't vote on it, or the planning board didn't.
I would, I would think that, I would have thought they would merge these three lots, because this house is on two of the lots. Why would you merge?
And these separate lots right now?
No, that's, that's one lot, this is another lot. This house is on.
The dash line is an old lot line. Forget it even is on this plan. The dash lines are, are previous.
Oh, this one is, I understand that.
This one, this one and this one were lot lines for the subdivision nineteen twenty-three. And this house existed before nineteen twenty-three.
And these were merged and these were merged.
These were merged, these were merged.
Right.
What my argument is, they should have merged these three, because.
Well, they would have, because they have a common ownership at the time, before they could merge.
Yes, yes. I think they were on common ownership, because it was one owner that, or owners.
So we have an existing condition before us. This is what's here. And there's, 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 there's a couple points. One, is eleven, if, if this was done the way it was shown, is eleven, this property eleven have, uh, be perceived as having a pre-existing non-conforming lot that needs the P I O D and everything but size. That's one. Two, the size of the lot you're asking for is dictating the size or allowability of the size of the house that you are planning to build?
Yes.
Yes. The fact that you chose the old lot line in which to swap back and forth is, is arbitrary to your decision of what you would like to do.
Well, it seemed logical.
Seemed, right, seemed logical, but still you could have cut this lot in half and given more, more property back to this one and a little less property back to this one, or you could have split it fifty-fifty across, across the two lots. Right.
We, we could have made a pork chop shape, just to get the frontage, I guess, as well.
Yes.
There were a different number of methods to do it, but it seemed that these original subdivisions made the most sense.
So understanding that the, the choice of how, of what you made and how to get here.
Yeah.
Then it still seems that you, property eleven could give property fifteen an easement over their property as minimal as it is for the existing condition and access would be provided to fifteen. The variance would be, that the frontage is provided via a variance. If it's one resident giving another resident, you're not giving a variance for use, you're just extending access, and that is agreeable. If, if one was commercial and one was residential, you couldn't give up your property for residential means, for commercial means on your. means, for commercial means on your residential property because you would be granting an easement that deals with use as opposed to just access. Is my understanding. So we have that. And then to me and the...
If you grant an easement to fifteen, it would not, because it could still be an illegal lot. You couldn't build on it, even if you granted easement to it. Because it doesn't have frontage, it violates state law.
It... As currently configured.
As currently configured, yes.
That's why you're asking.
That's why I'm asking for the relief.
Well, you know, and crazier things have happened, but could Dartmouth Way be? And has that been asked at the COMCOM? If there's any way that you could get some relief or extend or at least make Dartmouth Way...
I tried that on another property, Gerard Way, several years ago.
I remember that.
No way. And that, you know, Gerard Way has two sections with a small area of that...
So...
That's impossible.
It's funny because Mr. Martell, one of the abutters who wrote a letter in opposition, he suggested that same thing, maybe just a little bit of Dartmouth Way.
So we have several letters. And if you want to, we're going to take a minute and we're going to read some letters that were received into the record at this time. Because we have them.
We are, this is George and Donna Fennigan. We are long-term residents of Plum Island. The family has lived at Six Fire and Brimmar Way for over seventy years, spanning through generations. The property in question was owned by our in-laws. The proposal made by Gerald Fandetti, while quite beautiful, presents a problem for our house, which is situated behind the designated development. The issue is the location of the garage and driveway. We anticipate noise, headlights, issues that would impact on the placement of our main living area on the first floor and our master bedroom on the second floor of our home. It is our hope that the garage entrance will be moved to the front of the house that will access from the street, but without disturbance to the environment nor to us. Paula Irving, I'm writing this letter to express my opposition in granting a variance and special permit to the properties located eleven and fifteen Sunset Drive, Plum Island. Request for the variance is special or not due to unique hardship, but for the purpose of taking land from one lot thus making it even smaller in order to remove nine hundred and fifty-one square foot footprint, one bedroom, one bathroom, and replace it with two bedrooms or three. If the studio should count as additional bedrooms, two full baths, two half baths, forty-seven hundred square feet footprint home. If any hardship is found to exist regarding lot frontage, I believe, alternative design solution should be found to comply with city and lessening the environmental impact of development of gradual ecosystem surrounding area eleven fifteen Sunset Drive. It's heavily vegetated, hope to have sprouted wildlife. That depends on small pockets of green space left to survive. So the laws are placed in part to protect and maintain character of the island, preserve natural habitats and manage the impact of infrastructure and water and sewage capacity. Granting variances that result in development of larger homes and removal of vegetation and alterations of dunes have a negative effect on the island. Regarding the request for special permit as in a letter, I'm also concerned with the height of forty-seven point three feet as noted in the plan, which clearly exceeds the current zoning limits of thirty-five, which obstruct Sunset use for my property. Our other concerns are the size of the structure, driveways that impacts the environment, surrounding trees, dunes, exterior lighting that could shine in the direction of my home mirrors, and boards that deny variance, special permit. Jay Martell, please accept this as submitted for the Z B A meeting November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four in reference to eleven fifteen Sunset. I was born and raised on Plum Island for almost five decades. I've had a vested interest in maintaining and preserving the beautiful, serene, quaint atmosphere the island provides to its residents. Proudly still to this day, I maintain a real estate interest that I wish to continue this beautiful island for my family and generations beyond, as well as every visitor to come. I appreciate the opportunity of the Z Board. In affording myself, my community to discuss this application, the neighborhood surrounding eleven fifteen Sunset Drive for almost five decades has been encompassed by a threatened family atmosphere being comprised by a small number of longstanding generation residents. Neighborhood has been mostly undisturbed during those decades of ownership by families who value the coastal community we have inherited for generations. The proposed project by the applicant, I feel, a personal feel will bring an extreme detrimental impact on the neighborhood as potentially setting a groundbreaking new detrimental precedent over overbuilding, destroying the coastal environment we live in, and by now not only building up to avoid flooding, but now building out to destroy the natural landscape of this petite pristine beach area. I feel the Z B A should fully consider all the significant impacts this project presents in the future of Plum Island, notwithstanding that the intent and spirit of the P I O D was to continue to preserve open space, limit the expansion of non-conforming single and two-family structures, as it is to prevent the exacerbation of existing problems with density, intensity of use and destruction of coastal areas we live with. Z B A variances are not placed without property owners to recreate bylaws to suit their personal family needs as the applicants have indicated. Applicants should be encouraged to work within the bylaws to make minor modifications that are not detrimental to the neighborhood environment and spirit by bylaws of the surrounding community. Applicants claim they require a single level property, which is ADA accessible, and this is, the ideal location is telling us they have other properties they own and set up in hunchions amongst others. That would be a similar build with less detriment to the environment and be more streamlined except for the project. Applicants have shown that by their previous property acquisition of Plum Island, they should be keenly aware of the coastal area they have tried collectively to protect for decades as they previously have been afforded great leeway with building and obtaining relief for projects in the urban hospitality projects for gain. We are not dealing with asphalt bike lanes on Plum Island. Additionally, there are actions of fully remodeling the interior and reconstruction of overbuilt exterior decks and splitting on property at eleven Sunset went under the radar of the inspection department. This now looks as though reconstruction of the deck at eleven Sunset was done to allow for a driveway to be placed directly on the lot line of three abutting lots and paving way for the destruction of a significant area of coastal dune area which the laws prohibit. The applicants are petitioning the Z B A for detrimental hardship relief and knew the extent of relief they would need prior to this acquisition, are seeking a detrimental relief through the board as a planned redevelopment. This redevelopment is in no means the best interest of Plum Island or the community. We agree with our neighbors and share in the disappointment that the applicant has chose to bring this project forward. We're hopeful that others will have the courage to move forward to oppose this project. The applicant has every right to bring the project forward. Abutters have every right to be heard in opposition. We would like to raise a few of the following points to have the applicant's response or at least have the board consider impacts and importance. The applicant claimed that the lot is illegal lot. If that is the case, it should be considered unbuildable lot. The detriment of this application is exponentially increased with the attempt to permit fifteen Sunset Drive, all of trying to mask it as a poor attempt suggests it will make the lot more conforming. A lot at eleven Sunset Drive will now become less conforming all in the spirit of masking of fifteen Sunset becoming a more conforming lot as to frontage. However, all this done is trading one for another by redrawing a lot of fifteen Sunset to create frontage and now making eleven Sunset substantially and detrimentally more non-conforming to a lot size. Both lots require four hundred thousand square foot. By redrawing the lot lines at fifteen, eleven is now being reduced in lot area by seventeen thousand square feet to a measly eight thousand square feet, taking it from almost half of the conforming dimension to a quarter. Additionally, now the lot at fifteen is barely staying under the side setbacks now by one tenth of a foot and reducing from fifty to a minimum of ten and increasing the maximum lot coverage from four to fifteen percent. The applicant calls for the increase in lot size of fifteen Sunset Drive with redrawing almost three hundred percent, six point four percent to nineteen point eight, as well as doubling the height of pro special permit application, as well as four times the increase of R. According to the P I O D, additional bedrooms, one additional bedroom may be created in lawful pre-existing non-conforming single or two-family structure with one or two bedrooms, subject to the applicable regulations set forth in subsection ninety-seven, looking to add one bedroom, not to a two-bed plus additional room of a studio. The applicants have proposed two bedrooms, single-family dwelling, which is levels in the right. However, it seems that though there potentially is a mask as a studio in these plans, which would indicate this property will contain three bedrooms, which is outside of the guidelines of the P I O D. The applicants claim that the lots need to be redrawn due to lack of frontage of a lot of fifteen Sunset Drive. The question that although Dartmouth Drive was not completed right away, is it in fact a paper street by the town bylaws? By that property should be afforded the frontage of Dartmouth Way, now negating the need for any redrawing of the lot and only necessitating a variance of the frontage on Dartmouth Way. Has the town been afforded the opportunity to evaluate the possibility of developing the R O W on Dartmouth Way? And has the town and applicant complied with P I O D ninety-seven four D identified below? No building permit shall be issued for lots with frontage on an unconstructed way, which is not qualified as a street until the planning board approves a plan prepared by the applicant demonstrating that the proposed way is sufficient with civil grades to provide for the need of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of land abutting thereon or served thereby and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land. And the building erected to be erected there on the first course of pavement for such way has been installed in accordance with such plans. A certified and writing by the planning board, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for such a lot until the second and final course of pavement has been installed in according with such plan, a certified and writing by the planning board. The lot at fifteen Sunset is only landlocked on paper. However, Dartmouth Way was completed and the lot will no longer be landing on it. The town should reserve the right to evaluate the completion of Dartmouth Way, not allow variance based on a claim that slot is landlocked and still compliant with frontage on Dartmouth Way. Although, as the applicant states, there are no view impacts to the abutters, the impact of this project to Plum Island come in many other ways and are significantly more detrimental to the existing property and not in the spirit of P I O D. Significantly more detrimental, Board of Appeals finds that the proposed use is not more detrimental than the current use. The board should find that this project, as proposed, is significantly more detrimental than the existing and current use. The Z B A should strongly encourage the applicant to reconsider this application withdrawal as proposed. This would afford the applicant the ability to return to the Z B A with a much less detrimental plan. A new submission should come before the Z B A with a plan more in the spirit of the P I O D. I would again caution the Z B A that this would present a new precedence for future applications as to the newer style of building out, not up, which will expect exponentially more destructive to the fragile coast makeup of Plum Island. Jay Martell.
There's one by Mario, I'll give you a break.
All right, thank you.
This is from Ms. Thomas, who I believe is with us tonight, Margaret Thomas. My family has owned the fourteen Columbia Way property since nineteen sixty-nine. I now own both fourteen Columbia Way and thirty-eight Dartmouth Way. I purchased Dartmouth Way in twenty eighteen to ensure the property will be maintained as open land and allowing the enjoyment of neighbors and wildlife. The proposed plans by Gerald Fandetti and Charlotte Forsythe of a thirty-five hundred square foot structure directly impacts the beauty of some of the last open space on the populated side of Plum Island. This will have a negative impact on wildlife, including turkeys, rabbits, birds, and the occasional coyote. In addition, I take great pleasure in looking over the marsh, which will be significantly reduced by the proposed forty-three point seven foot structure. I understand the need for a single level home for an aging parent. My own mother lived at fourteen Columbia with twenty-three steps from outside to her living space until she was ninety-five years old in twenty twenty-two. A review of the proposed plans more than addresses the single living need and could be scaled back to benefit the current law. Mr. Fandetti and Ms. Forsythe are addressing the same boundary line, boundary line issues that all the abutters have had to deal with. In my case, the house was moved to clear property lines. In reviewing the request, there may be other ways to address their concerns, perhaps a variance regarding frontage or a change in address for fifteen Sunset to make it the permanent address. It is my hope that the board does what is in the best interest of the environment and keep Plum Island a wildlife sanctuary for the enjoyment of all.
Excellent. All right, so let's just figure out what we're, let's recap, figure out where we are and what we need to do. Okay, so hearing the applicants propose what their intent is, hearing discussion with people, having the letters before us and looking at the plans, having a discussion, having Larry help us out with some terms of procedures, the intent before us is to take two properties and re-divide the property line to make one bigger and one smaller. So one of the things that would need to be understood is that for a lot that gets made smaller, we would need to find, we would need to understand what are... So, okay, so the next thing is, once somebody, if somebody changes lot lines, however they do it, and changes the shape of their current lot, they then, they then lose all pre-existing nonconformities on that lot. The lot is basically reset. Now, in order to do that, it would need some variances in order to give it new pre-existing nonconformities to allow that to happen because we cannot create nonconformities. So we can do a variance to create nonconformities that exist. Is that clear so far?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So in doing that, does lot eleven, being smaller, truly meet the intent of the P I O D? That's a question. Two, in creating the bigger lot number fifteen, we would then be setting up to and for the intent is that the bigger lot would allow a bigger, newer structure on that lot. So in thinking this through towards where this is going, we would then be asked to review a new structure on the larger lot and decide if it meets the P I O D and basically is it in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood or the dimensional requirements that it now proposes? So we're at the point where the variance is argued that the shape of the land does not have frontage and this proposed new larger lot is giving it frontage, which allows that lot to be built. Okay. So and it would still have, it would still be nonconforming in terms of frontage and so variance would need to be adjusted for, for the size of the lot and the frontage. In thinking this through, we do now, I think, need to understand what is proposed because if we grant a lot, line size change, and eleven checks out, then we've basically granted what would be allowable under the P I O D conventional requirements for the new larger So far. And it seems clear after all the discussion that we had that you, an older lot line in which to use as a lot, as the line to be moved or swapped back and forth between the properties, and perhaps there could be a different line that's drawn to give more equal size to both properties. And the whole premise of what we would allow for a special permit is based on the circumstances of, is it in keeping with the existing surrounding neighborhood? So what we have is, we have the property, we have the lot, we have photos, we have surveyors, information, we have the one lot, we have the other lot, we have all the numbers that were calculated by a licensed civil engineer. But what we don't have, need, is we don't have the bigger adjacent neighborhood to say how these two lots are in keeping with the adjoining properties. And basically what the P I O D is saying is that it understands that the, all the, or a lot of the properties, almost all the properties, run or have conditions of pre-existing nonconforming. And so as to give property owners rights in which to do something, the judgment that we have, again, in terms of keeping with the neighborhood, is to try to allow equal rights to adjacent neighbors. We are not, through the dimensional criteria, trying to penalize somebody in an adjacent lot for, and actually give them more rights because of the adjacent lots also have nonconforming. And if you're building in a similar nonconforming, then there's more, there is a unified neighborhood and so everybody is equal. We're not granting somebody something special each time it comes before us. We're not granting somebody something special each time it comes before us and we're at our whim to judge the specialness of it. We are judging it against the existing neighborhood. Which, in, in practice, is good sound that if, if all the houses have five feet from the, from the roadway, that the front setback is supposed to be twenty feet and all the houses are five feet and you've got five feet and five feet and you're building a new one and you want to build it at five feet and you're carrying that building line, that is acceptable because you're consistent, you have consistency. So, to me, what would sort of clear the path for understanding and decision is that we would have some means to, to understand the neighborhood to say that what you're proposing to minimize on Lot Eleven is, you know, somewhat consistent with the existing neighborhood and what you would be proposing on Lot Fifteen would also be within keeping of the neighborhood. And if, if one or the other wasn't in keeping, then you could move the lot line, change the area, and, and make, make both lots more in keeping with the neighborhood. And then we would be, then we would be asked to provide a variant, variances for both properties to extend the non-conformities of the new property, understanding that the structure is either existing or proposed new would be in keeping with the neighborhood. And if we did this and it went, if we gave you a variance tonight on both properties and then you went to the planning board, the planning board went, yep, thumbs up, and you come back to us and we look at the neighborhood and say, oh, uh-oh, then we'd be more in a pickle than, than where we'd be right now. So, we... It is a pickle. You know, we're, like I said, we're all residents. We, we want to be helpful, we want, we want to provide you the rights that you have, but also provide you all the rights that everybody else has. And, and we're not looking to give you anything that's above and beyond special that nobody else should have a path to have as well.
Can I make a comment in that regard?
So, hold it one sec. So am I. Clear in my thought process here. I haven't gotten to what I'm asking, but we've gotten this far. Am I following the path, Larry?
Yeah, no, follow me.
Okay. So, it would seem that, that, as I'm saying, is that I think I'm asking for more of the neighborhood to understand what else is going on in the street and on the properties adjacent to you, to understand what you're, you're asking for. So with that, if you have comments?
My experience in the area, excuse me. There, over the years, there have been additions and subtractions to lots in the neighborhood. And what has happened over the years, there's an amalgamation of lots. Some are small, some are larger. There is not a consistency of size that was originally subdivided in nineteen twenty-three. Twenty-three, twenty-six, whatever.
Long time ago.
It, it's all changed. And a lot of that change occurred before the merger doctrine existed. So, we're in a situation where I, I, I am sympathetic to your argument and it makes sense. But the fact is that that neighborhood, there's a, there are several large lots in that neighborhood. There are so many small lots in that neighborhood. And if we start looking at, oh, okay, what is the mean lot? Is, is that the correct way to view it? Or are you saying, we, what is the, is there a ma, a formula to look at the lots so we can make a determination?
Well, we...
What do you, what do you?
We're asking you...
I'm just trying to understand what you're asking.
Well, you kind of said it. We're asking you to make the argument and come back to us and say, look, here's the immediate neighborhood. This is what we consider all the neighbors to be. There are lots of equal size of what we're proposing and there are lots of equal size of what we're proposing for Eleven. And if you take the fifteen houses, ten houses, whatever, within the immediate area, there are, there are five that are just like Lot Eleven and there are two that are going to be like our new Lot Fifteen. So, and with that understanding and, and how those houses are positioned, then what you're proposing, after this is all said and done, would fit right in with the neighborhood. If for some reason, the, the lot that you are proposing is the biggest lot of every, of everything, then you're, you're, you're stretching the boundaries of what is in the neighborhood. And if, if Lot, Lot Eleven becomes the smallest lot, you are pushing the boundaries of what is in the neighborhood. So, if, if you could look at that and make that argument, just present that back to us, then, then we can say, well, your, your Eleven fits right in with these three houses and Fifteen fits in with these two properties. It seems like it fits in with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, that, that is, and that is the ultimate leeway sway that we have for judging. Because if you have a piece of property, again, and your, your neighbor's five feet from the road and I say you have to be twenty-five feet back and then that pushes you up against the property line and it makes your house half the size of your neighbor's, you get the same lot. Theirs is pre-existing non-conforming. Basically, what we're trying to do is saying, well, you're going to build new and you're going to take your pre-existing non-conforming and keep them. You're not going to be more, any more detrimental, but you're going to be in keeping. Everybody's got the same thing. That, that's our...
Okay.
Overlying premise. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, okay.
I just was asking for a clarification on the lot size. I can tell you that the two lots I own, when they get combined, it'll be about fifteen thousand square feet. But the amount of land that I'm, that's buildable on it is significantly less. So when we talk about the other size of the large lots, there are several of, and I do understand there are other large lots in the area, but most of them do not have, or all of them, they have, they have a huge portion of it that's not buildable. So as he does his assessment, it'd be great to understand how much of it is actually built on versus...
The, the, the better the understanding of the neighborhood in all facets and everything that applies to the P I, P I O D and the, the better the argument is made that these two new lots will be in keeping with several and not, not pushing the extremes at either end is, is a way to say that, that what you're proposing will fit in with, with everybody else. And the fact that, you know, unfortunately, the fact that somebody has a piece of property that sits on the, in front of another piece of property and may block a view, they have just as much right to build it if, if it meets the intent of the P I O D. And so what we're trying to understand is that, is, is the shape of the new lot in keeping with the neighborhood and therefore the size of the house is going to be in keeping with the neighborhood. And therefore you have equal rights, even though your properties are different sizes, to do what you, you're intending.
Right, I was just going to say, our, the first house we built on Southern Boulevard, when we first built the house, I had views everywhere. Now, there's no views at all because our house walked into the ocean, they built up. The house behind us, I had a really nice way to look at and saw the, so now it's gone because somebody built up. I went, I didn't, I didn't want to build that, I wanted to build below. And...
Understood, and we have, we're, usually people figure out what's in keeping and they figure out what's within the P I O D and they, they typically, with some questions or comments or maybe some tweaks, are, are approved. But we have, we have denied or, or, yeah, we have basically told people that some, that their premise last year, that what they were imposing was too tall because it wasn't in keeping with the neighborhood and...
I'm sorry, what was it you said, that last thing you said?
We had denied an applicant for building a bigger house.
A bigger house?
Bigger, taller house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because it wasn't in keeping with the neighborhood and it, it, it just was out of, out of scale and out of shape.
The thing is, we've been...
So, building a lower house would be inconsistent with the neighborhood? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm...
And a lot, there's a lot of wonderful trees in that and we're preserving all those trees. So in a way, you won't even see that house. They won't interact...
So, all, all, all good arguments when we get to the house. But I think what we're trying to do is make sure that the lot...
Is consistent with the neighborhood.
Is consistent with the neighborhood. That would allow you then to, to build a house or a new structure that is consistent with the neighborhood.
Did I hear one argument, something that if we can, we can figure the lot as we have it now, we can still build a house, a low house that we want to build with them?
Yeah, I, I think we're, if, I think every intent is to try to figure out how to reshape the lot so that you can build some, some sort of house. The question is, how big is that house and where is it positioned? And if the lot size dictates how big the house can be, then we need to just... We don't want to change the lot and give you a bigger lot, giving you a bigger structure that then is, is bigger than everything else in the neighborhood.
There's still a lot of land around this house and it's going to be, that's what they're to, you know...
I understand and I, I'm...
I'm sorry.
We're not, we're not quite on your house. We're, we're on the concepts of figuring out if we were to grant variances, are we making Lot Eleven too small and are we making Lot Eleven too big? And therefore we've just made two lots that are different from other lots around and then effectively changed the essence of the neighborhood. If, if you're in keeping and maybe that lot line shifts over around five feet or something like that and you, and you still have the metrics for what you're proposing, it could all just work out.
Did I hear somebody say about easement too, like if you're going to do that too? Did I hear you say that easement?
I, I... I brought that up.
Oh, go be ready.
I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a hundred percent sure. That was a good comment, that even if you have an easement, it's still a landlocked. But if you gave yourself an easement and we, you know, Dartmouth Way, although it's a paper way, is still a way. If you had legal easement to get from Sunset Boulevard to access the property, you have access...
No, I wouldn't want to do it because it's, it's going to be like this.
I, I think our path forward here, Mr. Fandetti, is to continue this and ask you to do a study of what you would present as the neighborhood and show the lot and the position of the houses and show your, your two lots that you are proposing to create are within the bounds of the neighborhood. And, and then we have something which is equal and fair to all the other neighbors to, to provide you something similar to what other neighbors have, not exactly. And, you know, not everyone owns the same size of lot and not everyone owns the same lot in the same location. So, we're really looking in terms of, of, of size that the new lot would be and the smaller size of what the new lot would be.
Can I ask another question? When, when the neighborhood then includes all those green cards that we sent out to everybody that we got sent back?
That's where I would start.
The neighborhood is...
The neighborhood is loosely defined, right?
That's what I wanted to know.
We sometimes look in certain locations that the neighborhood really is just the two adjoining houses because that's, that's all that's immediately right there. Other times, it's a little bigger, spread out and there's a street and there's five or six or ten houses on it and there's some consistency with the ten houses and someone is proposing something a little different. And if you're looking to gain the same non-conforming consistency, then we, we, that's how we judge. And the bylaw is set up, the P I O D is set up that way to give us a really wide range of jurisdiction and understanding and try to balance out these non-conformances and inconsistencies to allow people to develop their property in a way that's favorable to, to what you want to do but also have similar rights or same rights for the people who are actually... Right?
So...
And we don't, we don't say we set precedents, but we don't want to do something that is atypical and you're the one off on Plum Island and then someone's saying, well, they did it. And we're like, yeah, but it doesn't, so we're not, we're not trying to...
So I want to know what your neighborhood, what you think the neighborhood is. It's like adjacent houses or the, the wider neighborhood that... Because as somebody was saying, there's, there's so much inconsistency from...
I would leave that up to you to decide what your best argument is for the neighborhood and reason why it is.
Plum Island is the neighborhood.
True.
Yes.
But again, I'm trying to tell you that we have great liberty in deciding what the...
Yes.
And when I've gone to town council and said, holy cow, this is a tough one, I, I... Town council says, Eric, what is the neighborhood that this is being applied against? How is this consistent or non-consistent with, quote, the neighborhood? So, if it's one adjoining house, if it's ten adjoining houses, if it's all Northern Boulevard, you just got to make an argument and then make and explain to everybody and understand that we're providing something that other people have. Why wouldn't you be able to have something that other people have? That's, that's...
This is, this is the architect. I spoke with my husband, the architect.
So... Okay.
I just want to say, I think it is a beautiful-looking house, okay? And I appreciate that it's one-level house especially. We, we also have the issues with stairs, so I appreciate your having decided to have a one-level house. But it isn't low, it's on stilts.
But that's, that's the other issue.
It, it will be a high house.
Understood, and I understand there were lots of questions about the height of structures and so...
In that driveway situation of access to the property.
Right. So, a height of building per our bylaws say that you take the average grade, get grade around the perimeter of the house.
Right.
And if your house is on a flat piece of property, then it's pretty easy. If your house is on a piece of property and one corner is at ten feet and one corner is at eight feet, then the average grade typically is about nine feet.
Sure.
So, from that point to thirty-five feet is to the midpoint of the highest roof. Now, we have some people that come in here and they put like a little couplon and, and, or they, they make a longer roof, a longer, yeah, taller, longer roof because that then moves the height up. It's not to the ridge, but to the midpoint, the halfway point of the roof. And, and, you know, creative people do some creative things, but we're, we're, we're looking at that. So, if, if somebody's looking at some of the numbers and they're saying that the ridge line is at elevation forty-three, that's just the elevate, the height of, of the elevation. It's not the height of the roof and it's not the height of the midpoint of the roof.
The height isn't what I'm, I'm going to be bringing up in the next phase of this when it comes to the house. It's the access that will bring that access to the back of the house, which will be at that high point. And in order to get into this house, there's going to be a ramp that is going to go into that garage to make it level with the house. That's going to be the issue that we will be contesting.
Okay. And when, when we get to issues about, we, we have some purview and appreciate what is fully presented to us by the design, by the owner and by the design professionals for what they're creating and what they're seeking. And then there are certain things of, whether it's, like, we've had people saying they're destroying a dune and we can kind of sort of see it, but that's really not our purview to manage. That's the COMCOM that would do that. So, sometimes we pass things and make conditions. Other times, we say, this is so precarious, it would be in your best interest to go to COMCOM first before you come to us. But we don't, and, and again, there's the planning board, there's the zoning board and there's the conservation commission and each one has a slightly different purview. So, I'm just setting that up because we, I may come back and say, appreciate your comment, but it's not really something that we can control or govern or have the bylaw, bylaws really aren't what we're talking to. I hope that's clear. And I hope I've, I've, I've done enough to explain what we're doing, how we're doing it and how we're thinking here.
You will, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, with that, I would ask, I'm going to ask for motion that we continue and that we ask you to provide and do analysis of the, quote, neighborhood as you would define it to show that both Lot Eleven and Lot Fifteen are within the bounds and are not more detrimental to the existing and surrounding neighborhood is what we typically said.
Sure.
Eric, before you do that, could I make one other point?
This is just on purely technical level, without offering an opinion one way or the other on the variance.
But I think if, assuming the variance is granted, if this came before the planning board for an A and are on this paperwork, I think we'd have a problem with it. And the reason is, the applicant is Gerald and Charlotte, trustees of the, is it... And the reason is, the applicant is Gerald and Charlotte, trustees of the, is it Red Wing Trust, I believe? But it also impacts Number 11, which is held in separate entity, the trustees of the Blackbird Trust, right? So I think we would have a problem granting an A and R if the trustees of the Blackbird Trust weren't part of this, if they weren't applicants. What I'm, where I'm going with this, I suggest that somebody talk to the building inspector or even town council to see if the Blackbird Trust shouldn't be added as a petition, petition or here. Because remember, you're affecting the rights, they're they're two separate entities, legal entities, and you're affecting the rights of both.
So.
So, I mean, I I'm guessing it would just be a matter of amending the petition, but I don't think it's a big deal.
So Peter Fandetti asked town council about this in a matter of discussion.
Yeah.
Town council wrote on August 28, 2024, a four-page memo about procedures for divisions and outlining the fact that you can't do this before that and that you would have to go to the planning board, but you would need variances and.
And just outline that.
So, Mr. Fandetti, do you have a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay. So, and my bad, I didn't send it out, but I I I did receive this, I did read it, I was impressed by the the legalese, but also the clarity of thought to just simply step all the way through it. And so the matter before us really became that there was a pathway that was presented to the applicant. The building inspector had gotten clarification as how to direct the applicant. And here we are with the applicant seeking a variance first, understanding that they have to go to the planning board before they come back to us. So I didn't think it was a matter of process that that was already, the pathway was already agreed to and understood by the parties that we needed to to understand this. What it comes down to, though, is that it seems that we just don't have enough information or an argument made to us to reason how this is in keeping, as we would typically do with any property submitted, any proposed property changes or structures presented to us. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So with that.
Yeah, I make a motion to continue the meeting, so to gather additional information on the adjacent neighborhood as it relates to lot size and some of the other details we discussed this evening. So, as to people with the neighborhood.
Okay. Second. All right. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So thank you for bearing with us, this is.
No, no, thank you so much, it's been, it's been interesting to hear a government working properly.
We're, we're trying hard for.
No, you really are.
Everybody and trying to hear everybody and it's, we don't, we don't deal with this every day. And the other thing I should say is that we're only three member board. We do not have any discussions on any applications outside this room.
Okay.
So we don't have the benefit of having a hamburger and sitting down and kind of reasoning this out and trying to think it through. So sometimes it comes across as very disjointed that we're kind of fumbling and bumbling and we are because we're trying to.
Yeah, I know, it's ridiculous, it's like, so we're still going to build here, but we just have to figure out how to do it, right?
Yes, you, you, I think you got a pathway, but the question is, is do you have a pathway that's in keeping that is?
Sure, I understand, but we've lived in Plum Island, and I've been coming to Plum Island since, I pictures of the beach when the beach was enormous when I was a kid. Now my kids are fifty, so we could park Plum Island.
Well, let's hope it gets back to that.
It's the size of the.
The beach, they are, how can you count them down?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I need Eric to respond.
Eric?
Yep.
I want to think.
Mary, Claudia.
Mario?
Claudia. Jack, Kelly.
Kelly?
Larry Murphy.
I'm the unvoted member here. Thank you.
It was hard because, um, you guys got a way to get me into the house without the forty six.
No, we can appreciate that and the, we, we weigh the personal intent also that we'd like, when somebody asks for something that's very personal, like I'd like to have my, my mother live here, it's, you know, we feel it, we understand it, we can appreciate it for all reasons, but there's something that gets discounted because really what we're trying to do is just set the property up so that it can have a life of its own without being encumbered by something that's so unique that it makes it actually more difficult in the future for that piece of property.
Right. But lower, I could, you know, I know.
We, we, we all.
Everyone tries to improve.
Yeah, I think that would be an equitable.
Very good. Right, with my husband. Okay, all right. Thank you so much, thank you.
One more, but.
Yeah. I think you heard news, that was very long reason.
Thank you, appreciate that.
In the days I always would be, I didn't.
No, not yet, one more.
Okay, I just want to get that.
Before we close, I want to.
So, I don't know. So, you want to say it again?
Thank you.
I want to say it again.
But it's repeated several times, so. It's somewhat appropriate, though. So. Mr. Walter Erickson, good evening.
Good evening.
You have, you're here for us to give an update on Cricket Lane.
Yes. So I just wanted to give the board an update, how we're doing. Things have been working all pretty well with, we've got, we hope to be paving the first two-thirds of the road by the first week of December. And we've got, you know, we've connected to the town water, we're putting in all our drainage sites, rough grading, so it's coming out good. And we're working with the town's engineer, Joseph Walker, and we've been working with the water department. Had a couple of minor issues that we've resolved along the way, but it's been going pretty good.
Fire hydrant?
Fire hydrants.
Not in the right place or connection?
Added some, added some hydrants, wanted the water line moved and elevation changes. But everybody's been pretty cooperative and I think it's coming out pretty good.
You had one big incident with a truck driving over somebody's lawn?
We did.
And you fixed it right away?
Yes, we did, we did.
Yes.
I have good crews that have been with me, some of my subs have been following me for 25 years and I have, I think, good sign, it's good guys.
Do you guys get all emails? There's Martha, Chrissy, Walter and I, I get, I get copied on everything.
No.
So I see a lot of discussion things, I read them, there's not any action or comment for me, but I, I'm, I, you know, I read them, I file them.
Yeah, we get, I don't get them.
This is the.
I use that semileap.
Okay. If you want to.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great to.
Put it in the loop. The, the thought process is just Martha's keeping me in the loop in case somehow I just say, wait a minute, or this was the means in which to get updates, we would ask for for a semi-reg or whatever that might be, and anytime you were doing something major or had a good, good completion milestone, it would be good to hear.
Yes.
So that's what we're doing.
Okay. Hey, we did apply for our first four building permits, which will be hopefully starting soon. So, so that's good.
There was a whole zoning map and numbering and and all that.
It's all been taken care of, yes. So we're getting through it, it's, you know, it's a new process for something, so it's it's coming out good. And, you know, we actually have a pretty good rapport with the neighbors now, we haven't had any issues at all, so, other than that one where the truck driver drove the lawn, but they've been very good, so.
She sent in a thank you email right after you fixed it.
Yes, that was, she was very responsive, so it's been, it's been good, we're having, it's a good experience.
We, we like to make this go really good because it's like one of the first ones, so.
Yes.
It would, it would be good just to have everything go as it was, was planned, I don't.
So I did have a couple of things I wanted to talk to the board about as part of a, as part of the construction of a, you know, we have a community septic system and for the community septic system, we need a backup generator and controls for the pumps. And we also will be drilling a well for our sprinkler system, irrigation system for the whole complex, so we don't use the town water, and we'll need controls for that. So what we'd like to do as an amenity is build a shed, a small shed, like that's shown there, so we can put, you know, the controls for the generator and then we took service for the pumps and everything in there, and it can be serviced and used as a storage shed for the community.
So when you drive in and then you go up to the circle, where is the well in relation to the septic system?
So, we, we haven't drilled the well yet, so we've got to, we've got to figure that out, but we have a big, we have a big field area that's going to be right over here, and it's really good size. So we imagine, you know, we've got gazebo plant from here that was on our original plan, and I'm sure the kids are going to use this for plenty of year, but our septic systems and everything are all in this area here. So we'd like to put the shed over here someplace.
Mm-hmm.
And the well, I don't know where we're going to put it yet.
It's going to be a hundred.
It's going to be a hundred feet away, even though it's for irrigation. I, I think we may be putting it back here.
Okay. Is the, is there another shed for the well?
No, nope, it'll just be a Germanачian well and we'll just run all the controls.
So, being an architect and giving you my two cents freely here.
Uh-huh.
It might be nice if the shed was somehow positioned parallel to the road so it seemed like a gatehouse or an entry pavilion or.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Something that you're driving past as opposed to sticking it out on the property, cocking it some way that kind of doesn't really ground itself. You have these two full-up parking spaces?
Yes.
And if you were to put it here and it was positioned between the two? Just, it'd be nice if it was organized. Now, while we're doing snow clearing, it'd, yeah, it would be nice if you drove in and then, you know, this is the face that you're looking at and you put a Christmas wreath on it on Christmas, there's just something very nice about the whole setup about the neighborhood.
I, I think that's a good point.
Or you put a little sign that says Cricket Lane on it or something, you could put a wagon wheel on it, but you could enhance the whole by by properly positioning your shed.
Yeah, and actually, if we make it look like a gatehouse, maybe we make it look a little better than this, it might be a good idea.
I think that would go a huge way to.
Yep.
Every time people enter, they feel like they're, they're, they're entering a community, which is very nice.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
The other thing we'd like to do is put some kind of fire pit, you know, in this area here, you know, so people can congregate, you know, and.
And we just, so with that, if, well, there's going to be kids running around screaming anyway, and there's kids running around over here screaming, but if you're having a place that they can congregate, we just think that maybe it should be a little bit more in so that you're not putting it closer to the neighbors than than you, than you put. And I guess the way it shapes out is they're already going to be blocked by, most of them are going to be blocked by houses, right? This, this is much higher than this.
Yes.
This goes like that.
It is, yeah. I mean, the scale's confusing on this, too, this is a body scale, so if we put something back here, it still be quite what's away.
Yeah, I'm just making my comment, I'm, I'm not scaling off, I'm just thinking, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It looks like, are you going to put in exactly this because this looks?
No, we're just going to put in something similar.
I was going to say, give me one, too. I'd like this, Chrissy wants one, too.
I want one, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like this myself.
Okay, so. My, my only thought is noise, other than, I don't, I mean, you already have a field, you already have a gazebo, I don't, I think by adding this, the only thing that you could have is a gathering of people that would create more noise, but, I mean, somebody could have just as many people in their backyard if they really wanted to.
Yeah, we were actually thinking of pickleball, but boy, there's so much noise factor, I've been reading more and more about it, hearing this ping, ping, ping all the time.
Keeps coming up, some people can fall asleep and other people, they're about ready to kill you.
Yeah.
Especially if it goes on all day long in your home all day long.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't, you know, if the pump for irrigation is a necessity, I just gave you my free comments about what I think it would be, you could make it nice and get more out of it than just a pump house. I don't have an issue with that.
Sounds, that's a great idea.
Okay, and then the, the, a, a, a fire pit patio setting, I guess I would, I would, so understand what you're asking. I guess I'd just like to talk to Martha and just think back of, are we adding or changing something and is there a process or can we, can we simply do it? In, within, within all the rules that we're kind of all.
Okay, no problem.
You might as well submit a new updated site plan at a minimum to record it.
Yep.
But I just want to make sure that we're aware or we're not getting into something bigger where all of a sudden we should have just had you come before us and said, this is what we plan to do and we take a vote and everybody goes away happy and we're all good.
We probably won't be doing anything until springtime anyway for, for that, you know.
If you do put in a fire pit, I would think that you, like this structure with the chimney and it has some controllability and it has a bit of a flue to it, is better than just putting it around a pit where somebody makes their own bonfire and it, and the wind can take it and kids can fall into it and there's some sense of better control.
Right.
With it.
Yep.
Especially with what we've just gone through recently with the drought and all the fires up and down that 95, something a little bit more in my opinion would be better than something that's less for, for doing something like this. So we need to figure out the process.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think the pump house for necessity, but let me, let me just talk to Martha and let me just, I want to go back and read through my, my notes, and I think we'll get there.
Great.
Is it?
Any, yeah, any minute. Any other questions for me at all at this point?
You're on schedule?
I'm a little bit behind, we hit a lot more boulders than we thought, you know.
What are you dealing with, boulders?
We, we crush them and then we make a three-inch minus product that we use in the driveways and fill in the garages and everything. So it comes out okay, so, just like the stumps, we round up all the stumps and we use them for erosion control on steep slopes, and it works out well.
Are you going to be framing all winter?
Yes.
At the point?
Yep. So hopefully the market stays good, we'll see. It's hard for people to come out and see a barren site without any houses up, you know, so.
It's like when we do rollings, you can't get tenants in until the steel's up, like, no matter how many renderings you show them, until someone can physically stand there.
Yeah.
And see it, then they're not ready to even entertain the thought. So I think people would like to see it. Even if you have a frame, it doesn't have siding, but if at least it's got the plywood on it and they can go stand inside of it, then they can get a sense of space and.
Right, then they know it's coming anyway.
Right.
I already got a call to be put on the list for the affordable listing. So I, I just have the person's name at my desk if more calls come in, but the calls have already started, people are interested.
Good.
Yeah, I think that'll be good. So in the springtime, too, once we get, one of, one of the four permits that I pulled was for one of the affordable houses. So we'll do one affordable for every three market rate homes and we'll probably start the lottery process once that house is almost complete. Because when the people apply for the lottery, if we can't close relatively quickly, it changes their finances sometimes and then they might not qualify and it's, it makes it difficult, so.
So when you get a couple framed and, or when you get about half, we're going to do drive bys, it's not like, but I, I, at some point, I'd like to see it with all of us and we can set up a proper meeting that we can all be together and discuss it, but we should go walk it and just understand it from plans to let's aim, don't get a tour from you.
Yeah.
And just see it all.
Uh, once I get a house up, I'll be happy to do that, I can meet you on a Saturday or Sunday up there.
Yeah. It's very facilitated for me.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Great, right, thank you very much, you.
Thank you. All right, anything else on the agenda, is anything?
I'm responsible, officer denied or?
They, they, so they looked at the plans.
Yep, I did, yep.
Here's Bob Lofter, here's the neighbor. They wanted an easement.
Right.
So this is a non-conforming commercial use, this is a residential use. You cannot extend the non-conforming use on a residential property. If this happened to be a resident and for some reason they wanted an easement, these guys wanted to grant them an easement, then you're giving a resident to resident, has nothing to do with the use, and you can do that. That, that's my simple understanding.
That's good enough. That's good enough, too.
Who caught that one? That's pretty good. Lisa, Lisa caught it and and went back to Peter and said. Good. So it got caught before you came for us and we had to look this one over.
I have butter comments, but I just put them in the folder because Target's not moving forward.
It would, I don't know, for me, it would be nice, cause I've been in that parking lot when people are coming in and people are coming out and then you're like watching people coming down the pike and you know, like.
The butters have said nothing's being resolved. We, even with it not moving forward, it's still gonna be an issue with parking next year and the, uh.
Understood, but legality is legality and that's, it is what is. Right? Okay, so we're all, Larry, you got anything for us?
Nope.
No.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
Second. Hold on a favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, good meeting.